Good evening. We're going to go ahead and start this City Commission Workshop, March 13, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting into order. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Present.
Commissioner Burbank.
Present.
Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Jody Lee. Commissioner McCool.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
Here.
Mayor Vila.
Here. Let's go ahead and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we're going to start our presentation regarding Flipside Mentorship, presented by Latasha Alamo. Latisha, I'm sorry. If you can speak into the speaker, please, and then there's a button there. It should, if it's green, that means it's on.
Sweet, yes. Better?
Yes.
All right. My name is Tish. I'm the founder of Flipside Mentorship, and this is my VP, Ben. Last week, I approached the council over a gap that I saw on the city website about needing more resources for families that have been enduring any bullying. It's very, very prevalent now. Today, I come before you guys, offering to assist in that gap through my program, and so I was going to walk you guys through that. Before I get started on the slideshow, I did want to just tell you a little bit about who we are. Flipside Mentorship was originally started because my son and my niece were bullied. They had adverse effects. My son became depressed, and my niece started getting an eating disorder. According to educationcorner.com, one in four kids will have experienced bullying before eighth grade, and the CDC says that kids who are bullied have high anxiety, low self-esteem, and are twice as likely to commit suicide. So this is why it's a big, big problem in the world today. Flipside started as a resource to help families as a whole through community mentorship and outreach and more, which you'll see in the slideshow that we're about to present, because I didn't want my son, my niece, or any other child to be part of the statistics. So, thank you, and we're going to go ahead and start the slides. And is it just the presentations right here, 11, top right? Oh, look at that, why, Flipside. Let's go. All right, so, you want to?
Sure. Again, my name's Ben. I'm the vice president of Flipside, so...
I paused it. I thought I did. I didn't.
I have difficulty with technology, so I do apologize. One of the things we're here to answer today is what does Flipside have to offer? We think it's a program that offers quite a bit, actually. We do do virtual mentorship. It involves tutoring. There are also things like Bible study offered. It's a safe environment. Children and families get to attend from the comfort of their own home. We also offer in-person events, but a majority of our day-to-day is done digitally. So, most of our topics are going to be family-focused and currently relevant topics, to include safety and anti-bullying classes. We also do quarterly events. Some of them are veteran-led events. We have what we call the Battle Bros. Event, which is an annual event hosted and run by mostly veterans from the US military. We actually have our next Battle Bros. Event this coming May. So, we do virtual events. We did a planner or calendar event recently. All of the children joined...
Learn about organization.
To learn about organization. They did so online. We had an individual host it, and we sent out calendars and stickers and all kinds of other things to the kids, so that they got to participate, even if they couldn't make it, and create a calendar, learn about organizational skills and why they're important. We did a Flipside Paints. We've done...
Projects for the teacher.
The... You speak about that one, because I don't have a whole lot of firsthand knowledge.
Oh, yeah. The luckier my teacher. We had the kids create, like, little keepsakes to give to their favorite teachers. So, that one says, "Miss Carrera." Shout out Friendship Elementary. From Marcus. Hello, the U. All right.
So, another big thing we do, we have community service projects or community organized projects that children get involved in, not just in the local area, but we also have groups in Mississippi and several other places. One of our main annual projects is Project Backpack. We host donation sites. We also, a lot of things are provided from people within Project Backpack. All the kids get together. We pack these backpacks. This last year, we focused in the Lake County area, actually, and we created backpacks for folks that live in the community but may not have a residence of their own. So, it had a lot of toiletries and some snack foods and things like that, and we actually provided that to the Taverius Police Department in Lake County to pass out and distribute as needed. We've also done several community service projects, such as Operation Coffee for Cops. So, we hosted a tent site outside the sheriff's office and did coffee and doughnuts and things like that. It gave the children an opportunity to interact with our public safety officers and learn about day-to-day with them, as well as show their appreciation for public safety workers. So... These are additional photos of some of the folks involved in the program. So, some of the statistics about bullying specifically and why mentoring is important. Fifty-nine percent of children that are mentored in some form or way are more likely to earn better grades. Fifty-two percent are less likely to skip school. Seventy-eight percent are going to be more likely to volunteer and get involved in their community. Ninety percent are more likely to become a mentor themselves, and 130% more likely to hold leadership positions. Pushfar.com and mentorship.org are the resources that we gather a lot of our statistics for as far as mentorship and its purpose and use. And here are reviews from both parents involved, and I do apologize again. I am very technologically inept.
And this one's supposed to have sound.
I'm going to try one more time. There we go. Some of the parents of some of the children that are currently involved in the program recently left reviews, or fairly recently, depending on what you believe a recent timeframe is. Within the past two years, and I do believe that all of these parents' children are still involved in the program. And then, we also have a short video that I think is supposed to have sound. Again, not entirely sure how to make that happen, so I do apologize. It's just some of our kids speaking about the program itself, what it's done for them, how it's changed, what they do day-to-day or their lives in general.
If you can hover your mouse over the video, there should be a little...
At the bottom?
It's on. It's on on the bottom.
Okay. Well, that's the wow factor right there. Oh, man. I have it on my phone. I can play it on the speaker. Sorry. One more minute. Sorry about that. Maybe we need to get somebody to help. I'll grab my phone, unsync it. I think that would be the best. Give me one second.
Am I going to hit the mouse? Your volume's all the way up.
I don't know how to help.
Volume's all the way up, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe we should just be broadcasting. That's okay. I have it on my thing. I'll just hold it to the mic. It should work. I'm sorry. Okay. No worries. I'm going to... Sorry about that. I'm going to make it happen. Hopefully, you guys can hear this. I'll hold it right to it when Amory's part comes on. Okay. Let's see if this works. Please, work.
That was actually helping me because it was, you know, letting me open up to the rest of it. It wasn't just on Flipside that I was able to actually speak out, but since I had gotten on Flipside, I've noticed myself growing a lot more in confidence.
Flipside's hobby.
And we'll skip forward to that. Supposed to be a little bit seamless, but technology, it's definitely me. All right. And fast forward. Okay.
How to bond, make more relationships and fix relationships, because in the past, a lot of my friends done really bad things to me. And Flipside's just taught me how to be myself and be the better person.
Thank you, Nina.
You're welcome.
What's something you learned from Flipside?
I've learned... I've learned a lot of things, but one of the common things that I love to learn about is our safety.
Hey, I'm Jayden. I'm part of the Flipside, and I'm the reason that Flipside was created. I used to be bullied when I was younger, and ever since the Flipside was created, I've been doing better in life. And we... It's taught me a lot of things in life and what to do for people who, like, are in need. One time, when I was on a field trip in St. Augustine, I had lunch in my lunchbox, and I went past a homeless man. I took one look at him, and then I took another look at him, and I gave him, and I unzipped my lunchbox. I grabbed out my pancakes and my food, and I gave it to the homeless man. And I walked off, and the teachers were so surprised, so they gave me, like, a bag of lunch, a two-bag of lunch. And so, we had free time. It was really cool, but enough of that anyways. So, um...
So, Flipside's...
So, Flipside's taught me, like, a lot in...
The thing I love to learn in Flipside is, like, when we're, like, helping people. And safety, like, because safety is really important for kids and for adults, especially for adults, too. And, um, yeah, I hope you adults and kids probably about my age, I hope you join the Flipside.
Thank you, Ms. Alamo. And I have Commissioner Vila Vasquez has a question or a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I... How long have you been running this organization? Three years. Three years. And are you a 501(c)(3)?
And sin filing. Right now, we're listed as a not-for-profit.
Okay. Because we had something similar to what you're running. It was called Bully Armor. And I hate to throw his name out there, but it was run by Nick Pizza. We did it for quite a long time, and we used to partner with the schools. We used to go to the schools with professionals. It did work. It really did work, unfortunately. Lack of volunteers, lack of funding. It had to be closed down, but it did work. What other areas besides Deltona do you have this in?
Well, because it's in virtual, I actually have it... My kids are kind of everywhere. I have kids in Tampa, Claremont. I have them in Vicksburg, Maryland. I have them in... Oh, I'm trying to think of... I can't think of that other place. But I have them in different states.
So, it's virtual?
It is. The virtual mentorship, yes. We meet with them every week virtually, but I do host the hubs. They have in-person events to get them out of the computer space and into the community. And then, we always host an end-of-the-year service project. So, I'll do one in September. So, this year, we're going to be doing September Steps for St. Jude's, which is a virtual 5K that every kid can participate in everywhere. And then, in Florida, we do Project Backpack, where we pack supplies full of, like, toiletries and things, things that you, you know, people in need, need.
Do you ever have a person-to-person with this project? Because I know ours was, you know, in-person.
Yes. Yes, we do. We do a lot of in-person. It's just the weekly mentorship we do. Like, I have it divided up by age groups. So, like, the first through third meet on Tuesday nights, fourth and fifth Wednesdays, and, you know, so forth and so on.
And you have sponsors that sponsor you?
Not yet, but I'd love them.
And are you... Do you have volunteers or are you...
I do. I have...
Paid staff?
No. I have all volunteers, a very, very incredible amount. Majority of the volunteers are actually right here in Deltona. They come together for all of... Help me coordinate all of the events, the virtual events, Project Backpack, things like that. So, I do have a really dedicated team that's 100% volunteer.
Okay. If you could leave me a card before you leave?
Absolutely.
I don't want to throw him in there. I'll give him the card, see if he wants to call you and follow up. But our plan, our project worked so well here. You just, like I said, lack of volunteers and funding was the cause of it, you know, going down. But keep doing the good work.
Thank you. One thing that I did want to mention that I didn't put in the slides, but we are developing, like, seminars for the parents. So, I teach internet safety, cyberbullying to the kids, but I do go a little bit further. And that is the one thing I would like to partner with the city on. I am obviously going to go to the school board, but for the city, I would like to do seminars and things that might be good for your website.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bradford.
Well, she covered a few questions, but first, I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you for, you know, noting a problem. I'm not going to say it's not a problem, and I think it happens in every school, every city, everywhere across the world. And, you know, as Commissioner Vila Vasquez has said, we've had several programs, and, you know, aside from NICS, you know, we also have the Cladalist Program. They do a lot of mentoring, going to the schools. Are you guys in any of the schools? Like, you had mentioned, I think, one school. I mean, how many of Deltona schools are you in, and are you already registered in those schools?
I am not. I am actually currently working on that. I just reached out to some of my friends that are teachers, asking if we can come and speak to the classes. So, we're really going to be going heavy with that.
Okay. Yeah, and I know she covered a couple of the other ones. And, you know, we also have Backpack Buddies that I know works locally. So, I know everything. We can never have too many groups that are out here to assist our children. And I guess my biggest question is, what do you... What's your whole purpose of coming tonight? What would you like? What was your goal?
So, my goal was to let the city know that, number one, that we are here, that we are a resource. Again, on the website, I do want to do seminars, so if you ever need that for families, you can, you know, how are you doing this? We can be somebody that you can, I don't want to say an affiliate link, or, you know what I mean, but somebody that, hey, if you need help, this person is an option. This mentorship program is an option, and just to partner in the future with Deltona.
And I guess my question to the city manager and city attorney, they had mentioned that your 501(c)(3) is in the process. What about insurance liability and all of that information? What would be required for them to, you know, I guess, even putting a resource on the website, I guess, is what I'm thinking, you know? Yeah. So, what's their requirements to be able to work with the city? Let's make sure they have all those down for them.
You know, this is something new for us, so it would certainly take an insurance policy for your liability and insure us as a co-insured. But it gets... We'd have to look at the information associated with the curriculum they're going to put forward and be comfortable with it. And certainly, we think, or I think, it goes a long ways to solving some issues, but I think some of that has, would be preferred to have the school system involved in it also, because that's where the point of contact is with the kids. So, I think there's, you know, some things we can do with our system, but I also think we probably need to work a little bit on how we'd put it together.
Well, and that's my concern. I think you have a wonderful program, and I know we have a lot of wonderful nonprofits in the city, and to just, I don't know how to say it without coming out, like, I don't want it to sound rude. If I say, "Oh, yeah, great. We're going to put you on the website," we're going to have hundreds of nonprofits come in and being like, "Phew." You know, so, whatever we can do word-of-mouth right now to promote you and help you, and if you can leave information, again, thank you so much for putting it out there and all you're doing. Yeah, go ahead, Marsha.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, too, that most of, in the county, the county of Volusia County handles a lot of the burden with regards to social services. And so, all our taxpayers are paying for those services in the taxes they pay to the counties. So, I think you should put them in your group also, because, you know, this may be something that may end up being... The greatest thing would be a partnership between the schools, the county, and the different cities. So, I think that, you know, we... The Commissioner Vila Vasquez, she may be able to give you some contacts with regard to who to talk to at Volusia County, or we can get that for you, because I think that they, one, they have the biggest pot of money with regards to paying for social services and programs, and the other is, that could help us provide greater, you know, coverage, and, you know, because they have that responsibility, and this may be something that they haven't really looked at before. So, I think that that is definitely an important place to go, and it may be something that then helps us come in in some kind of supportive capacity to work with the county. So, I think that's a good place, you know, and definitely someone you need to talk to.
Thank you, Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the school has something similar to it, and again, the best bet would be for you to meet with the school, because without the school's board's permission, you can't get anywhere. Our school board representative is Ruben Colon. I don't know if you know him, but he would be the best place to start. We have a great superintendent now. Her assistant angel is also great. That would be the best place for you to start to connect with the kids in the schools, because we would, we, if anything we can do, probably just advertise you, but other than that, your best bet to get into the schools will be the school board, which would be Ruben Colon. Or, you know, anybody else within the school board.
Ms. Alamo, I want to commend you. Just coming up here to speak about a program you have is, it takes incredible courage, especially for you trying to do with our kids and even some of the adults, so keep up the good work. And as the Vice Mayor and Commissioner Vila Vasquez says, reach out to Ruben Colon. He's our school board rep. He's very attentive, and I'm pretty sure he can help you in other ways that we possibly can't, so... Thank you for the presentation.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to business. We're going to go to Parks and Recreation Department report by Mark Many.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Thank you. So, you guys asked me to provide you a report of what's going on in Parks and Recreation, what we're doing, what's coming up. So, I want to give you a brief rundown of where we're at and where we're going. So, I'm going to start with our Youth Basketball League. The winter program just completed. We had championship Saturday, this past Saturday at West Cryle. We thanked the mayor for coming out. Many people probably don't know, but the mayor also was a volunteer referee a couple of weeks during the season. We appreciate that. That's a hard job. It looks easy, but it's very hard, as he found out the hard way. We also want to thank Commissioner Maritza for coming out to help do the surveys. She was out there last weekend for that as well. The winners will be coming before you next Monday night at the commission meeting, so you're going to recognize the winners of all three age groups. We also have started our spring baseball and youth soccer seasons. I know some of you attended the spring baseball opening days at Van Park and Dewey-Boster. Some of you were at Dewey-Boster for Deltona youth soccer as well. Those are in full swing. I would invite each of you. Our senior softball league at Dupont Lakes has just kicked off their spring season. If you have some free time on a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday night at 7:00 to go out to Dupont Lakes and watch some of our seniors in action, 60, 70, 80-year-old men and women that are playing adult softball at their age. It's a great sight to see. It's a lot of fun. So, that being said, some of the things that are coming up. March 25th, West Cryle Park. We are going to do a one-day registration for our upcoming summer camp program from 10:00 to 2:00. The lady to my left, Eunice, here, will be in charge of that. That's at West Cryle Park from 10:00 to 2:00. We also have our youth flag football registration ongoing. I appreciate the Vice Mayor mentioning that at the last commission meeting. We are also going to be bringing back our midnight basketball for our youth. We're probably going to start that late April, early May. The second and fourth, or first and third Friday of the month, again, Eunice will be in charge of that as well, and that's a free program for our kids to go do something constructive and safe at nighttime and play basketball. The month of April is a busy month for the Parks and Recreation Department. April 1st, Extravaganza, 10:00 to 12:00. This year, we have 40,000 eggs. Age groups are 2 to 3, 4 to 6, and 7 to 10. We also are going to have our special need, starts at 10:00 sharp. I'm sorry. April 1st, Saturday, April 1st. Saturday, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said no fooling, right?
Yeah, exactly. No fooling. Nice, nice. Couple other events we got going on in April. At the last commission meeting, you guys mentioned a job fair for city jobs. After speaking with the city manager, we decided we are going to do the city jobs, and we're also going to host a job fair for the business community. It's going to be one-stop shopping. So, I've already reached out to a lot of our business partners from the last job fair we have, getting a positive response. We're expecting a huge turnout for that. That's going to be Thursday, April 13th, from 1:00 to 5:00 at the center. We also are planning on bringing back our spring adult basketball league. Registration for that will start probably the first week in April. We're looking for a kickoff, probably the third week in April, for our adult basketball, 18 and up. April 22nd is going to be a really busy day in the city of Deltona. In the morning at 7:00, as part of the mayor's fitness challenge, we have the 5K walk-run from 7:00 to 9:00. After you're done with that, you can go home, take a shower. In the afternoon, go out to Dewey-Boster, the Bacon and Brew Fest that was postponed from November because of Hurricane Ian, I'm sorry, Hurricane Nicole, will occur that afternoon at Dewey-Boster. April 28th, I think, is a Friday. It's going to be our Arbor Day event. Mayor, we're going to need either you or the Vice Mayor here to read the proclamation for that. That will be at 11:00 here in the chambers. In May...
What day was that again?
I think that's Friday, April 28th. I'm pretty sure it's Friday, April 28th, last Friday in April. And you'll read the proclamation. We'll give out, we have popcorn, lemonade, a whole bunch of good stuff. In May, we're really preparing for our summer camp program. In June, we have, the summer camp program will kick off on June 12th. That will be at West Cryle Park, and that's from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Prior to the kickoff of that, we are going to have our Festival of Nations event on June 30 at Dewey-Boster. We are working with Commissioner Maritza on that. We are working with Commissioner Maritza on that one. She providing great assistance to help us get that thing going. We're expecting a big event for that. After we kick off the summer camp program on June 12th, the week of Father's Day, we are going to have a father-daughter dance at the center. You'll get more information on that as we get closer to that event, but we're expecting a real big turnout for that one as well. July 4th, as you know, is an event we do every year. Unfortunately, we do, will not have a carnival for July 4th, so we'll do the traditional July 4th event. I believe July 4th is on a Tuesday this year. After July 4th, we'll finish our summer camp program. We'll start our registration for our upcoming summer youth basketball league. As the mayor knows, he's already getting calls on that. So, other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Can you take a quick minute to tell us about some of the issues with the gym?
Issues with the gym? We've outgrown the gym. When they built this gym back in the mid, early to mid-'90s, it was ideal for a community of 40,000 to 45,000 people. Right now, we're a city of 95,000 and growing. We just do not have the space to run it. We had to turn kids away from the program because as the mayor and commissioner knows, we're out there from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on a Saturday, and we can only take a certain number of kids. We hate to turn away kids. We hate to do a waiting list. The last season, we had a waiting list of over 80 kids, and we hate to do that. The gym is just not big enough for what we need to do. There's not enough room in there to run multiple games at the same time, which would allow us to have all the kids participate and not have to turn kids away.
Mayor, I want, I want you to know that we must have gotten about over 100 surveys, right?
From West Crowell, yes.
From West Crowell, over 100. And just about every single one of them, the complaint was, "We need a bigger gym."
I, I was bringing that up really quick because I noticed a certain county commissioner was here and wanted to make sure he heard it as well.
I'm sure they'll be bringing it up to you next Monday night when the kids come with their parents. I, I think you'll hear that quite a bit from a lot of the parents involved in our league about needing a full-size gym.
Mark, I think that's what, about a $10 million project?
10 to 12 million, yes, sir.
10 to 12. So, just make sure the commissioner hears that we're looking for money.
About 15 million.
About 15.
To stay safe.
Let's go. We got to buy land. So, can we make it 150 million?
I like that. I like that, Vice Mayor. I like that. So...
In all seriousness, we will probably address this when we get into the budget process, but we will make a request to the county. They do have some funds that are certainly appropriate for this need.
Certainly, Thureco will be applying Thureco as well.
Thank you.
Is this on an agenda item already to speak about? Is this already on an agenda item to speak about?
No, it is not.
No.
Not at this time.
No, this is just a report to the commission.
Do we want to make it on an agenda item to talk about? Because, I mean...
I believe he's going to put it on.
You're going to do a separate agenda item, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Unless any other commissioner have any other questions for Mr. Burbank? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
At this time, we'll listen to public comments, please.
There are none, Mayor.
Okay. City manager, any comments?
No.
Okay. The meeting's adjourned.